Call the Board of Education Workshop for August the 17th, 2020 to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Mike?
My name is Mike Willamie, Clerk of the Board. This BOE workshop of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester in Wichita, Kansas. The topic of today's workshop is Review of Guides for Returning to School. Due to the Governor's Emergency Declarations and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this workshop. This workshop is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org/wptvonline, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching WPS-TV. Following the conclusion of today's BOE workshop, the workshop will be available on the WPS YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cox Cable Channel 20. The agenda for this workshop was published on August 13th, 2020 at www.usd259.org/boe, under the BOE Meetings, Agendas, and Minutes tab. The news media also received the workshop agenda. At this BOE workshop, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the workshop. Thank you.
This workshop, we will not be taking any votes. This is simply a workshop for the Board to get information so that we can make a final decision about starting school. That meeting will be this Thursday at 6 o'clock here at North High School. Before we begin, since we have one of our members remote, I would like each of you to identify yourselves and your district, starting with Ernestine.
Ernestine Crable, District 3.
Julie Hedrick, District 2. Cheryl Logan, At Large.
Mike Rody, District 5.
Stan Reeser, District 4.
Ron Losales, District 6.
Ben?
And Ben Blankley, District 1, remotely.
Thank you very much. With that, Superintendent Thompson.
I was going to say good afternoon, but now we're in evening. We are meeting in an evening meeting. So, good evening to everyone, and welcome to our workshop this evening. We are here today to talk about the gating criteria that has been out and about. So, we've gotten one from the Kansas National Education Association, the Kansas State Department of Ed, Sedgwick County Health Department, and then you have your own WPS gating criteria that was developed. And so today's meeting is just taking the opportunity to bring to the Board all of these particular documents, and then have the opportunity to cross-reference them for you, and then have you then have some dialogue around these particular criteria, gating criteria. So, that really is the purpose of our workshop this evening. So, with that being said, I will turn it over to Ms. Logan. We do have Lisa Lutz here, Dr. Lisa Lutz, and she has prepared these documents. And so, we wanted to have her be able to have the opportunity to go over the documents with you, answer any questions that you might have, and then just look forward to the dialogue around these particular documents. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Logan, President of our Board.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we do have the gating criterias all on one sheet. Board members should have a copy of that so that we can discuss it. But before we begin, Lisa, let's hear from you so that you can kind of give us the explanation of what we're looking at.
Sure. Thank you. So, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, since you've adopted your decision-making guide, some additional criteria has become available. So, we'll just review that so you have all the information and can further your decisions. And so, we will look at criteria specific to school opening, and then if you so choose, criteria specific to activities and spectators at activities. We'll start with school opening. And before we get into the cross-reference document, I just wanted to review the learning models that KSDE has defined that you will see on the cross-reference documents. On-site learning environment, obviously, where students and teachers physically are attending at the school site. Hybrid learning environment is where students do both, attend physically at the school site and are also learning online on a computer with the assistance of a teacher. So, they are participating, could be some days during the week in school and other days remotely, but students are participating in both. And that is the model that is currently not on your decision-making guide. We currently do not have that in Wichita Public Schools. The remote learning environment then is where students are learning at home, using a computer with the assistance of a teacher. Any questions on the learning models before we move on? Okay. You'll see all of those in the...
Okay. It is my understanding that we have investigated the hybrid model and made the determination that that's not going to work for a district of our size. Is that correct?
That is correct. It has been investigated, and we have put in the decision-making model the best options, we feel, for our students and families.
So, our options really are onsite, remote learning, and then our EI Academy, which is now closed because we're full?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The school gating criteria, cross-reference document that you have, that includes the Kansas National Education Association, Kansas State Department of Education, and Sedgwick County Health Department, along with your decision-making guide. We'll start in that first column, the green column, where students could participate in-school onsite. You'll see the criteria are very similar. There are some very slight differences. For example, in the first row, the Kansas National Education Association makes reference to the previous 14 days, show less than or equal to 5% positive cases in the county, where the State Department of Education makes reference to less than 5%. So, very similar, but some slight difference. And you'll notice that they all make some reference to a previous 14 days. So, if we looked at 14 days prior to today, our numbers in the county would have been around 12%. So, we are on a decline. However, I checked late today, and the numbers were around 11.4, I believe. So, variation for every couple of days. So, that's something to keep in mind, that there is variance over even just a few days. So, when you think about making decisions, with what kind of stability might you offer families in saying, you know, here's how we'll look at this over a period of time.
Can you get closer to the mic?
I sure can.
Thank you.
All right. The next column over, the yellow one, onsite or hybrid. Here again, you see a lot of similarity around that 10%. The State Department of Ed is the one that has a bit of a range from 5.1 to 9.9. The others do go to 10%, and they too cut off at 9.9%. If the cases in the county are around that, between that 5 and 10%, then they're recommending that schools would attend onsite or a hybrid. And you start to see a little bit of delineation there in two of the models, where some elementary students might participate in the onsite or hybrid, and only hybrid for 6 through 12. Then, moving over to the next column, onsite, hybrid, and remote. This is a little bit more in alignment with what you have in your decision-making model in terms of the learning model. The criteria here, again delineates hybrid for pre-K through 5, remote only for 6 through 12. On many of these models, and here they're looking at, the cases are around 15%, less than or equal to 15%. And then, obviously, remote means cases are fairly high at 15%, and everyone's learning remotely from home. So, no one onsite at that point, which is, again, in alignment with what you have on your document.
President Logan?
Yes?
I'd like to ask this question now. Can we, and Dr. Thompson, I guess this is directed at you, can we not talk about the onsite hybrid? Because we voted as a Board not to bring that in. And I think if people are so confused as it is in what we're doing with that, that if we don't, if we talk about it tonight, they're going to think that it's still an option, and it is not an option for us.
So, I want to be clear with what you're asking me to do. Are you asking me to add that to your document, or are you adding? I mean, because we can't change the other folks.
No. No, I don't want to change the other folks, but when we talk about it, I'd like to skip over it and not talk about onsite hybrid at all.
Sure. Okay. Let's not mention onsite or hybrid.
And the only reason is clarity.
Or any kind of hybrid, because we're not doing any kind of hybrid.
Okay. So, just don't mention that word, please. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you. I just don't want to confuse people.
Okay. So, disregard hybrid. Yellow would be onsite only. It would be very similar then to the green. So, that would create a range then if you want to think about it that way. And then, the orange would just be onsite or remote, which is, again, very similar to what you have in your document. They've just put some, I guess stricter guidelines on where the percentages might be in the community than what you have in your document. So, if you wanted to look at potentially that orange column, and thinking about where our current, what our current county status is, we would say that we would be onsite and remote, because we're between that 10, 15% range there, which is, again, in alignment with your document. Questions on anything related to school opening?
Go ahead and continue. Yes?
I like the model that uses the decimal points. I think when it uses just the whole numbers, it can be a little fuzzy. Like, I like the one that uses like 5.1 to 9.9, because it makes it very clear. If it's 10, you don't know if it's 10 that you go this direction, or 10 that you go that direction. So, on our model, when we're doing it, I would like to suggest that we use the decimal numbers in there, so it'll be very clear. If we're at 10, it means this. If we're at 9.9, it means that.
Okay. Those are the kinds of things we're going to be talking about tonight. So, go ahead, Lisa.
All right. Okay. So, I made reference to our current status. This is maybe a day or so old, but we're still around 10, 11%. All right. So, moving on, if you want to go beyond school opening, we can look at some school activities and spectators and particular criteria around that. Your document, your decision-making document does pretty well address school opening, but we had not addressed activities at that point. And again, some definitions just to be aware of. The Kansas State Department of Education has a definition of high-risk activities that includes wrestling, football, lacrosse, and cheering that is outside of just sideline cheering, where the Sedgwick County Health Department also makes reference to high-contact sports that include basketball, football, wrestling, and then some non-sport activities, some extracurricular activities that might include band and choir, with some specific limitations there that could be considered. So, when their documents make reference to high risk, these are the activities that they're referencing. Just wanted you to be aware of that. Okay. So, in their documents, there are, again, a lot of similarities. You can see that each of them, if it's, if school is onsite, then the activities are onsite and spectators obviously are allowed. If you move to anything that's less than onsite, then, then no all school activities are allowed, but some smaller group activities would be allowed as long as people are wearing masks and social distancing is occurring. There could be some allowance for spectators, again, as long as social distancing could occur and people are wearing masks. I believe it's the County Health Department is the one that does make some reference that conditioning, practicing for athletics, those types of activities could continue as long as some mitigation techniques could also be provided along with that, again, wearing masks as appropriate, spacing, et cetera. Once you get to any type of remote learning, then the activities and spectators cease on all of the models.
Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to share for us before we begin our discussion?
I believe that is all I have for you.
Okay. You might stick around because we may have questions.
All right.
All right. What we need to, as a Board tonight, is talk about two things. One is the gating criteria for us to come back. And your comment, Ernestine, was in regards to that. Because if you look very carefully at our Wichita Public Schools Decision-Making Guide, we didn't put criteria into that, because that was developed before we had any, anybody's opinions about it. So, we're now at the point where we can look at three other examples where there is some gating criteria, and begin to give direction to the superintendent on, we would like for you to bring information about where we are as far as the percentages, or whatever we decide, that we need to put into our own decision-making criteria piece. That's the first thing that we need to have discussion about. The second thing is about the school activities. And we're talking about not only sports, but we're talking about extracurricular activities as well, because we have lots of kids that are involved in JORTC or other kinds of activities in our buildings, and they are in question about whether they can do it or can't do it. So, we need to give some guidance in that as well. Again, we will not be making decisions, voting on anything tonight. That all happens on Thursday. Our purpose tonight is to simply give the superintendent direction so that she and her team can put together what we ask for and bring that information back to us when, so that we can vote on Thursday. Okay? I see we do have, Mike has...
Yeah. First, Dr. Lutz, I'd like to ask you about the question, a question about the Sedgwick County COVID-19 slide that you have with the rolling average. I think it's the one before that one, or after it. There it is. Now, those are, my understanding, those are positive tests. How many of those, do they determine how many of those are asymptomatic, or are they just, if you're positive, you're positive regardless of the result?
I believe it's just the results. You have a positive result.
So, part of those positive results could be asymptomatic, which nobody has the disease. They just tested positive for it. Go ahead.
I was going to say, if they're, if they're positive, they have, they have it. So...
They may not have symptoms.
They may not have symptoms. They may not need hospitalization, but they do have the COVID virus. If, in this example here, as of August 16th, everyone had been tested, 10.6. Now, of that, people, other people who are positive, some of them may already be in the area where they're, where the virus has affected various things. And some of it can still be handled at home. Some of it is, needs hospitalization. But if you're in that 10.6, you do have COVID, no matter how you feel.
Okay. And I appreciate that, Stan. I know you're more of an expert on that than I am. I appreciate your background on that. Thank you for that clarification, too. I appreciate it.
Sure.
How do you want to do this? I've got some ideas on school startup. Do you want to just go over doing the class first, or do you want to do all of it at once?
I think we want to talk about the gating criteria first.
Okay.
And then the activities and extracurriculars and sports.
And gating criteria is percentages.
Right. Well, three of our, three of our examples have percentages in them, yes.
Right. But, and here's, here's how I look at those three other people that gave us numbers. One won't talk to us. The other two are biased in what they're talking about, I believe, Kansas NEA. And the Kansas State Department of Education has failed to give us any guidance at all on this throughout. So, I'm a little bit tainted with those guys. I think we need to come up with our own numbers based on what we're doing in Sedgwick County and not in the state of Kansas.
Okay.
And, you know, based on, based on this graph by Sedgwick County, if you look back, you know, Kansas NEA, there, we would never be onsite. You know, we would never get there. And I think that's wrong, and, you know, we'd be more in the full remote most of the time, which doesn't make sense to us, sense to me either. So, I think we need to make sure that our onsite percentage is high enough that it's a usable number. And I think 5% is way too low, based on my experience and my digging into this all weekend long, looking at test results and percentages and those types of things.
And the 5% would be like we've always been. Kids would be able to come back to school as we've always come.
Correct.
That'd be correct, the onsite. But I'm not saying 5%. I think that number should be more like 11 to be onsite.
Okay.
That would be my first stab at the apple, I guess. Would be start at 11 and work from there.
Okay. Julie?
My question is, I'm a step behind you, Mike. I want to go back to the graph, Lisa. The Sedgwick County COVID-19 test data posted by Test Date Graph. And I'm looking at the blue line, and does that blue line represent, I mean, it says in, in the little, it says there on the top that that's a rolling 14-day average. So, so that's an average of the previous 14 days and not the test results for that day? Is, is that how, is that how that graph is reading? Or is that blue line indicative of the percentage positive tests on the actual date that it falls? I mean, you can't see the exact day because the graph doesn't name exact dates.
Sure. I tried to go live to it, and I had a little issue there. But if you're live and you hover over the blue line, it will show you the exact date that that data is reporting for. So, your, your rolling average, if, if I could go back to about 14 days, we would be, see where it says 12.4 on there, on the blue line?
Yes.
We would, that would, that's about 14 days ago. So...
Okay. So, 14 days ago, we had 12.4%.
Right.
And then, and then, you know, a couple of days ago, we had 10.8% positive.
Right. So, you can see, you know, there's a declining trend there.
But we're still...
But we're still above the 10.
Above 10.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, that's that date as opposed to a 14-day average for that date.
That's how I understand it.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it, too.
That, that helps me. That's, that, that's an important data point to me. So, thank you.
Sure.
Julie, to clarify that, if you look at the bottom of each one of those bars, there's a darker color. I don't know if you can see that on yours?
The red.
The red. If this was live, you could actually put your cursor on that bar, and it would show the number of tests.
Can I go live, Mike?
That, that was taken that day, and how many of them were positive. And it's kind of interesting, because if you look at on the weekends, there's very few tests, and very few, but the percentage goes up because of the lack of data collected. And then you look at the bigger bars where there's, there's more, there's more of a database to go off of. And so, there, you're really kind of not comparing, in my book, as I was taught in statistics, you're not comparing apples to apples necessarily. But you, this, this graph here, you can actually go and it'll show you, you know, that given day, what the test results were. And it's kind of, it's different. There it went.
Yeah. It's very touchy. Here we go. Okay.
I think you may have to exit the call.
Okay.
While she's getting that, I'm going to go ahead to Stan.
Thank you, Cheryl. I was, my first thought on these gating criterias is that they are great reference tools. I like our decision-making model the best, but I wouldn't have any problem maybe putting over in the additional recommendation area that we will refer to all credible gating criterias as we are making our decision-making process. But I want to be careful that we are not painting ourselves in a corner where we're getting jerked around day-to-day based off of something that goes up 0.5%. That also, because I think that shows that we understand that there's great, great gating criteria out there, and we are going to look at it and pay attention to it. But I don't want to draw black lines where if you just barely step over it, all of a sudden we have to, you know, send the buses out and send everybody home at that, at that moment. So, we got to, we got to create ourselves some flexibility there. And I think we could do that under additional recommendation. And Cheryl, my second question is more in activities. Do you want me to wait on that one?
Yeah, wait on that if you would, please, because we will be talking about those in a moment. Okay. Ernestine?
Well, Stan, part of the problem, and the PR in this, and I don't mean just PR, but the frustration of the public, is that they don't know what our nebulous statements mean. And that's one of the advantages of putting a range of like 5.1 to 9.9. It makes it very clear to parents that they can look at the Sedgwick County data, and they can say, oh, my goodness, that means thus and such. So, I'm less likely to agree with you on what you just said, because I like the fact of making it so that parents aren't feeling like that we're trying to hide something, or that we're rubbing a magic Aladdin lamp to figure out what, you know, just saying that we're going to look at all of these different criteria and then decide is still very nebulous. And I really think that the parents and the teachers, while they will grumble almost any direction we, and there's going to be somebody that's not going to like it, but if they know what it is, they can say, well, I would have done it differently, but, so I want to have something that's, that they can know without having to try to discern what's in our minds when we mean thus and such.
Did you want to, and the reason why I came up with that solution was, we didn't have to arbitrarily say we are going to follow the Sedgwick County Health, or we're going to just follow the Kansas Department of Education. We were going, we're going to refer to all, all of them, all credible ones.
Well, I would like to refer to... Well, I would like to refer to all of them and even today, even talk about what ought to be the, the data that we put in ours that may or may not agree with any of these other models. Like, I really, like, if you look, the green one and the yellow one both have some on, have onsite learning in some of these models. And I think that we could put that as if it's between 5.1% and 9.9%, that that could be there on, there on campus. Now, I think that once it hits 10%, I think that that means it goes remote.
And then how, what kind of time criteria, if you did it that way, Ernestine?
That previous two weeks thing.
You would go by two-week periods? So we would be, we could possibly, it would be open two weeks and then closed for two weeks and then reopen it two weeks? Or are you talking about doing it for nine weeks in a semester?
I haven't gotten that far.
I mean, that, that's kind of where I was kind of thinking ahead on that, and that's where I ran into the problem of just, if we say we're going to refer to them and we have those numbers in our head, we could still go longer periods of time and let the public know we will do our learning models the first nine weeks and then reevaluate at the first, after the end of the nine weeks and go basically every nine weeks. I just didn't want to get into the, a situation where we are closing for a week, opening for two weeks, closing for three weeks, opening for a week.
Right.
Uh, that type of thing. That, that's the only thing I was trying to avoid.
Well, I guess part of it is I just have absolute confidence that everybody in Sedgwick County is going to start wearing their masks because they haven't, and they're going to all nag all of their relatives to wear their masks, and that it's going to continue to just go right down, that we're just going to have that, that slope is going to continue, and once we get our back in school, we're just going to stay there. I just have confidence in Sedgwick County.
Just one last thing. The problem with that, Ernestine, though, is, as you could see on the sheet we had, we were at 10.4, and today live, it's 11. And like Lisa said in her opening statement, today it's 11.4.
I think it's 10.4 today, isn't it? Or is it 10?
No, if you go live, that very last one is 11.
If you go live?
Is now... That very last one live is 11.4.
Make a liar out of me while you're speaking.
But that's, but, but that's my, that's my point. It's, it's...
If, if it had been, let's say it had been at 9.9 yesterday, then we'd have been in. And then suddenly today it's at 11.4, what do we do? Does that mean we all go home?
I think that's one of the discussion points. There's actually three things that we need to give direction on tonight, and that's the third. The third is, because I am in agreement, it is not fair to our parents nor our staff to one day we're in, the next day we're out. One day we're in, the next day we're out. We're going to have to give criteria that says, "We're making the decision today, we're in for whatever length of time we say, then we reevaluate." The only exception to that is that we took a huge jump. We jumped from 11% to 40%. Then we're going to have to call a special meeting and come back in. But, but I think the three decisions are, what's our criteria? A backstraer curricular and, and sports? And how long do we set together to say, "We're going to do it for a nine-week period, we're going to do it for a semester period, we're going to do it for a two-week period." All those things we need to give direction because that will give the superintendent the information she needs to bring us back the correct data. Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ron?
I think my questions are answered, but I just want to reiterate for the public, so one more time. What's the significance of the 14 days again? Is it, uh, something that we're going to use as, as a one-time thing? Are we constantly going to be reviewing this 14-day, um, numbers that's called out in all three models? So what's the significance of that again, 14 days?
So I might need Stan's help here, but I believe the 14, sorry, the 14 days has to do with the ability to mitigate the, the spread of the disease. That it takes about 14 days to do that. And so if you're on a downward trend and things are improving, then things are going well.
14 days is the time that, uh, once you catch the virus, and that, that next 14 days is critical. You're either going to stabilize, and if you're relatively healthy, I've had two coworkers at work come down positive, and they were back to work in five da- once they got their retested, they were back in five days. I had a summer cold and I was out for eight days. So, and the, the 14 days, and then the people who have underlying, um, medical conditions, they're the ones that in 14 days, it's going to be determined whether or not they have to get hospitals, hospitalized.
And then as far as making the determination, I think that's what's on Cheryl's list, is you need to decide, are you going to do this every two weeks or on a nine-week basis? Or whatever you determine.
So President Logan, so we're looking at the 14 days to help us, uh, to give direction to, uh, the superintendent as far as what we want to see happen or, uh, I guess great gating criteria
Right.
to see what happens for, um, on September the 8th, when the school year begins.
That's correct. We're making the decision on 30th, the 20th, beg your pardon, the 20th for the start of school on September the 8th. Right now, we are in a downward trend, basically, in the, in the county. And I, who knows what, it, it could be at 8% by September the 8th, or it could take a reversal and go back up. So we're having to make the decisions two weeks out because our parents and our staff deserve to know what's going to happen so that they can begin to prepare for that.
Right. Okay.
On the phone, I'm, I'm jumping in here, but it relates to the 14 days. Isn't that all, doesn't that also relate also to the amount of time that it's communicable? I mean, you know, when they're talking about 14-day quarantine, I assume that's because you, once you have it, you pass it on to others within the 14 days.
Yes, but you can pass it, and I just want to make clear too, I'm not a, I'm not a medical doctor. I just happen to work at a hospital. I just, I just now got that realization.
You're answering all the medical, all the medical questions.
I just play one on TV, right?
But that is correct. But, but here's the thing is, let's say I'm positive right now, and I, and I'm, I'm a systematic, I could be outside of that 14 days and be passing it along. So, but once I'm tested positive, then you spend the 14 days being quarantined to see whether your condition is going to improve or, and like I said, I've had coworkers get over it in as short as five days. And then they, but they still need to be quarantined for 14 days, so...
And you have to be retested, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Ben, did you have any questions or comments right now?
Uh, yeah, I had, um, two. The, oh, Ben Langley District one. Do we, is there any guidance on, from any of the sources that we've received so far, on just having special education students in person and everybody else remote?
Dr. Thompson?
There is no, we, we have not presented a model where we are exclusive to a certain group of students in or out. Everybody had the same opportunity to make a selection of in or out. And of course, some teachers, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, did work with students and they are working with students to help parents that are in special ed make those decisions about what models would be best for their students. So, uh, that's the only, uh, special consideration that we've given to one group of students versus another is through IEP meetings.
Okay, thank you. My second question about the gating criteria, do we have, is any guidance on, um, metrics for staff being in person versus them being in a full remote kind of situation?
This is Alicia. We do not have one created for that. In these models and the criteria that we put forth, this is in particular, uh, to, I believe, just the models that we choose for selections, not specific groups of people, whether it's, well, this one is students, but not for teachers. We do not have one.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay. It, because you're not here, Ben, if you have a question come up, don't feel uncomfortable saying you have a question so that I can call on you even if it's not, you know, in a rotation kind of piece. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. I just, I want to, I have studied these three models, and they're pretty hard and fast. And I think we are going to be at the point on Thursday, we're, we're going to kind of be looking into the future. What do we think's going to happen in the future? Because we're two weeks out from September the 8th. And at this point in time, in using the charts and looking at all the data, it appears to me that we are on a downward trend overall. It may bump up a little bit, but then it's pretty much going down. That looks like in Sedgwick County, we're going in the right direction. Thank goodness, and thanks to our people for masking up and washing hands and all that. I am a little bit uncomfortable saying on Thursday, if we aren't at 9.9 or 10.0, that we definitely are going to have all remote. Because, because of the unknown. You know, I think the minute you put a hard and fast line in the sand, it becomes very difficult to take into account that we're two weeks out. So, although I don't want to be wishy-washy, I, neither do I want to be so tied to a number that we can't use outside data like we're going down in the, in Sedgwick County. So, that's my two cents worth as we're having this discussion. I just, I, I am not uncomfortable putting some numbers in our, in our, uh, decision-making guide as long as we are tempering those numbers with the fact that we're making a decision in the fu- for the future, not today. So, um, Mike?
Can you go back to that Sedgwick County graph, or did you lock it off?
There we are.
That's the live one. Perfect. Go over to the very far right, there's a little bar down there by the 0%. Can you hold on that?
That one?
There's, I think there's one more over to the right, to the right of that one. That's the 16th.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
That's as up-to-date as it is, is the 16th.
Well, the blue line goes past, that's why I'm wondering, because how are they projecting a 14-day rolling average? And that's what they're talking about, is a rolling average of the last 14 days. And it jumps up from 10.4 to 11.4, but there's no reason, the tests for the average are going down. If you look at them, it doesn't, that doesn't, that's why I'm having so many troubles with this. And I think Cheryl's correct, we shouldn't tie ourselves down to anything, but we need to, to determine, we've got to have a jumping on and jumping off point. But the, the other thing is, is to what Ron has said, we don't want to go in and go out and go in and go out. So we would have to set a range that says we're going to go into full onsite at X percentage, and we're going to go out of full onsite at X percentage. So it gives us a range to live in, so we can see it's coming or not, so we can prepare our parents. Because if we, I don't trust this data, and I, and that's the problem I'm having, or I'd be a lot, lot clearer in what I'm saying. But, uh, I think we need to make blocks of, we're going to be in, full onsite with, with these numbers, and we're going to be full remote with these numbers, and then we'll be onsite hybrid with these numbers. So in other words, if we were to say today we're going to be A to C on going to school on the, on the 7th or the 8th, or whatever it is, that we wouldn't, it'd probably take two weeks or better for us to get out of that box, if that makes sense. So it does give our parents a chance to, to correct and go. Because if we tighten it down to one percentage point and we're saying, okay, we're going to go in at 5, 5.1%, but we're going to go out at 5.2%, we've done killer our, our parents. And so I think we need to look at it that way. How we look at it, I don't know, but I think we can see the rolling average, and I think that number needs to be wide. So what I said probably needs to be wider, like from, to be, full onsite needs to be maybe a 15% percentage point or something like that. I don't, that I don't know. And I'll yield to somebody else on that. But going back, you know, I think that's how we should look at it instead of these narrow bands that they're talking about and all these, these other deals. If that made sense. I ramble and I apologize. But I think the, the utmost is, is we need to think about our kids and our teachers, and then, and we also need to be thinking about our parents because daycare's not going to be out there for people that are jumping around and we're, we're, you know, and they're going to lose their jobs because we're making them stay at home instead of working. You know, I've got emails about that. So we need to be careful that we don't make it too wide, but we don't, need to make sure that we don't make it too narrow that we're hurting our community by pulling our kids out of school just to, because of one percentage point.
Ernestine?
Well, following up on that is that I like these models that have it one thing for elementary and a different thing for the secondary. We know that the science has shown that the secondary students can carry COVID just as easily as an adult. But they have almost no evidence that the little kids are in that same category. And I also think about, going back to what Mike was saying about the parents that have to try to find childcare and all of that. The elementary children are the ones that mainly need to have care. And so I like these models that have it where, like if you notice on our yellow on there, that some of the models have it that the pre-K to 5 go on campus. They go to school in the classroom with teachers. Where they have the 6 through 12 doing remote learning. That to me makes sense to split it like that if it gets into that category rather than, um, have it a blanket that all of our students, all 50,000 will do this or they'll do that. That's saying that the elementary, it does two things from my point of view. One, it keeps the ones more likely to carry the germ, it keeps them home learning remotely. That's the elem- that's the secondary students, that's high school and middle school. It also, the, one of the big things that's been just really on my heart is that 75% of our students come from families that qualify for free and reduced lunches. That means they're low-income. They are not likely to be families that are working from home and their child can have their learning device, their computing device, sitting beside them doing their assignment. They are not likely to have jobs like that. Those families, I think, are either going to have to not go to work and stay home with their children and therefore lose their income. We may see a whole spate of evictions of children and families because the families could not go to work. And that's been heavy on my heart about what to do about 75% of our students that come from those families. We know that a huge number of those are from single-family, single-parent homes. And that parent, if that parent doesn't go to work, there's no money for paying the rent. We no longer have this hold on eviction. So I would like us to consider it in two parts, in effect. Is what's the signi- the signature for bringing back the secondary students separate from what's the signature for bringing back the element, the, the pre-K through 5? Now, one of the things that I like about, uh, some of these here... 5. Now, one of the things that I like about some of these here is that, well, I've already said, I've already said my point. I'll stop and when I think of something else, I'll buzz you again.
Adia?
Oh, I forgot to say, I'm Ernestine Crable from District 3.
Dr. Thompson, a question, real quick question, as I'm reading this gating criteria, cross-reference labels up at the top, one says onsite hybrid, and the other one says onsite hybrid and remote. Those are, we only chose full remote, full onsite, and the EI Academy as our three.
Yeah, we can just scratch out hybrid on, on these, because this is.
Because there's, there's actually, the, the two center columns mean nothing to us because we, we are doing no hybrid at all. And again, I want to make sure we're doing this for clarification. The only three things that we have is onsite, remote, and EI Academy that we voted on a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. I think, I think what we're talking about is that we have decided we have a remote school, which we're allowing parents to choose, even if we have onsite, which we've also allowed them to choose. So our parents have two choices, the remote or the, or the onsite. They do not have a choice of hybrid, because we do not have that.
Right.
But what we're talking about basically in this discussion tonight is bringing kids back onsite.
So basically, it's the onsite parents that have chosen onsite, choosing whether we say yes, you'll come onsite, or.
You'll have to go remote.
You're going to have to go remote even though you chose onsite.
That's correct.
Those others that are remote already in our, my school, they're going to be remote, whatever the.
That's correct.
Percentage on our little chart.
That's correct. So we're talking about bringing back or not bringing back our kids who have chosen the onsite model.
Correct.
Okay. Stan?
I wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I apologize, Julie. I'm sorry. I must have clicked it early. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to, I, I want to go after Ernestine, because I'm going to follow up your comments and make a proposal of how USD 259 gating, gating criteria looks. So in the green column, I would like to keep what we already have, that we're totally onsite, protocol, at that point in time, protocols are in place to effectively mitigate the spread, few students and staff are unable to return to campus, and COVID-19 vaccine is available. I, I like the fact that we put a vaccine was available to go back to total onsite, back like we used to do school. For, we, for the yellow, we, it can be just like what it reads, Wichita Public Schools does not currently have a hybrid learning model. So keep our criteria the way it was for the yellow. In the orange, I would like to change to follow Kansas State Department of Education's recommendations, which are very similar to Sedgwick County Health Department's recommendations. However, they do give the decimal point, which Ernestine was referring to. So for the orange, I would like onsite for pre-K through 5, and remote only for 6 through 12. And that happens when the previous 14 days of county data show positive tests in a range of 10% to 14.9%. And for the red column, I'd like to have it read what Sedgwick County Health Department says, remote only when increasing, when the cases are increasing, and it is more than 15% positive in the county data.
Julie, could you repeat your onsite numbers?
Repeat my orange column numbers. The orange column is exactly what you see in front of you on the Kansas State Department of Education's block.
Go over a couple of columns. The onsite.
The green one.
The green one, I want it to be what we had previously, the Wichita Public School green square, so it doesn't give percentages. It basically says there's a vaccine available.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't allow any students to come back unless there is a vaccine available?
Totally onsite, doing school like we used to do, not providing an in-school remote option for parents. Yes, I don't want to go back to that until we have a vaccine available.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Okay, and realize that's her suggestion. We come to consensus. Stan?
I, I first wanted to just make a general statement of, working at the hospital, we've been receiving some correspondence with frustrations when they are, when someone is told, I don't know. I've been in the middle of this since the very beginning, and that is the most common phrase, even at the hospital, among medical people. So if you hear the phrase, "I don't know," at the school system, or at Dylan's, or at your convenience store, we are no different from them. That is a very common phrase, so don't let that upset you, because there are a lot of unknowns, and there will be a continue, a, a continued list of unknowns. That was just a general statement. Cheryl, you made a really good point, though, in that, in our criteria, we may have to put on there where and when we have an emergency board meeting, if we see the numbers are climbing, and what number are we comfortable at where, I mean, we basically have gone over the ranges, but once it hits 13.9 or 14%, what triggers an emergency meeting? Let's say we get, let's say we decide to go with our learning models on September 8th, and then two weeks later, we see a climb. And, you know, obviously, if it climbs from 10.4 to 11.2, that may, that's disturbing, but it's not alarming. But we may need to set a criteria of what triggers us to have a special meeting, so that we, if we, if the cases do continue to climb, we may have to reevaluate again.
I think the criteria should be when all of us call Cheryl and scream for us to call us.
If she, if she sees we're all getting nervous.
Well, I think we all have the best interest of our students and staff at heart, so, you know, the, I, I not, I do not want us to make a change with a point or two, because that could be just how many people were tested or anything else. But if we jump up 10 points or 20 points or 30 points, or whatever we decide, then yes, we absolutely need to come back together and make some decisions.
And I think the only difference, I'm with you on that, Cheryl, is I don't, I would get nervous with, if we get back up to 14% like we were on.
In July.
July. I would, that's personally my, that's my nervous spot. You mentioned 10, 10 points, 20%. If we let it get that far, then we are deep in a crisis that we should have had an emergency meeting weeks ago. So that's why I'm saying maybe.
I think all of the people, all of the three guides that we're looking at, all use that 50% number.
Yes.
For full remote.
Yeah. And is that what you were kind of referring to then?
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
Okay, all right. Well, then we're on the same page on that.
Okay. Ron?
Yes, I, I agree with, with Julie's proposing. I, I understand about the onsite, the green column, as far as maybe looking at what the Sedgwick County has instead with their percentage. And because one thing about, we were talking about how we didn't want to put ourselves in a corner. Well, vaccines, as we probably already know, some people don't like them. And if we put that on there, that might be an issue. But, you know, just something to think about, because we've had issues where people don't want to get vaccinated for mumps or rabies, whatever. So anyway, that's, that's something I was just kind of looking at. But I do appreciate Julie's proposal for the onsite, the orange column, onsite, remote, for 10 and 1/2 and 14.9. And I would also propose that we look at, instead of K through 5, K through 10.
Yeah.
And 11 and 12 grades be remote. You know, because.
So you're suggesting that K 10 is in, and 11 and 12 is out? Why?
Well, one of the reasons I'm thinking about is because with the 11th and 12th graders, you know, the 9th and 10th graders, a lot of them, I'm sure most of us probably know, but there's a lot of 9th and 10th graders that are still maturing, let's put it that way. And so they still need a lot of care. And I speak from experience.
I've been worried about the, my proposal about middle schoolers, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Middle schoolers, if they're left alone, that's not a safe.
Yeah, because middle school's all over the place. You have some that are not developed, you know, and you have some that are, and they're fully capable of taking care of whatever they need to take care of. And I would extend that all the way up to 9th and 10th graders. And I, I just think that would be just something to consider. 11th and 12th graders, I, I would say they have a pretty well-rounded view of their education, what they need to do, how to be responsible, and take care of their on, or their remote learning as best they can.
Okay. Ernestine?
Scratch me off.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, I'll take a stab at this. You know, Ron, I understand and respect what you said about the ages. And Stan, I understand and respect what you said about kids and, and the catching the, the virus. But as I remember, about three months ago, kids couldn't catch this. It wasn't for kids to catch, and.
Yeah.
They were, they were totally removed from this, and they, then they became, they were possibly carriers, and now they can, now they can get it, and now, now they're dying from it. So I mean, nobody understands this virus in my mind, so we've got to be really cautious in what we're saying there, too. But to your effect, Ron, and to Ernestine, I believe that we need to make a decision based on every student in the district, because if we go and say K through 9 is going to be remote, and 11 and 12 will be, or 10, 11, and 12, whatever it is, be onsite, or backwards, or however you want to do it, we've got cohorts in the school, school district where we're going to have one kid in a family that's onsite and one that's not. So now the parent's in the same dilemma that they were by splitting them up. So I think we need to look at it as, we're either going to be in school, or we're going to be out of school. And I don't think we should be dicing the numbers. I get, I get what you're saying, and, and it does make sense to a point, but now we're talking about, to your effect, Ernestine, 75% of our kids are free and reduced, and they can't afford a babysitter, so what are they going to do? They're not going to do the remote. And we, I think we were pretty clear in my mind that this spring, although our teachers tried to get our students to learn, it didn't, wasn't a very good experience for, for education. So I think we need to keep all these together, in my mind, and say, you know, you're, we're either going to be in school, we're going to be out of school, in one way or another. And then to Julie's effect, I understand the COVID-19 vaccine, and I appreciate that. But nobody knows in the world when that's going to be. That could be next spring, it could be two years from now, it could be tomorrow, depending on which group you talk to. And I think we need to be cautious tying that, that vaccine to our open date, because, because just of that, if we decide to, to wait until a vaccine shows up, we may never be back in school. Because the first round of vaccines may not work. We don't know that. And, and I'm, and Ron made a, a very good point. I would, I won't take the flu shot, because I'm afraid of the flu shot. You know, I'm afraid of a DPT shot. Luckily, I don't have to worry about that anymore. My kids are old enough.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's required. I'm just saying.
But I, well, I understand. So you're still going to have those, those deals, and we're going to have religious beliefs that are going to kick us out, and those other types of, of pre-existing conditions that'll kick us out of vaccines. So I think we should drop that, in my mind. And, and while it's, it's, it's understandable, I, I don't disagree with it, but I don't trust the drug companies to give us what we want. They're making money developing the program, more than they're going to make selling it. And that's a political statement, and I'm sorry. But, and you can yell at me later, Cheryl, for that one. But we need to.
We all can have our own opinions. It's okay.
But I think we need to be cautious, and I think, again, we need to develop a program that is totally one way or totally the other way. And I'm sure there's going to be that 1% or 2% that won't fall into that category, special ed comes in my mind, and those types of things. But I think we need to develop a program that is clear-cut, and, and we're going to open when we're supposed to open, and we're going to go do business the way we want to. And, you know, I don't want to shrug off the, the charts and the graphs, but, you know, you listen to TV, you get one opinion from this station, and you get another opinion from another station. And until I can get a constant opinion, you know, the Democrats are saying, here I go again, the Democrats are saying one thing, and the Republicans are saying another. What are we going to do? I mean, that's why it's such a tough decision to make. And, well, we're not, I think this board is, is the greatest board to make this decision. I think we need to be cautious that we throw too many caveats in there.
Okay. Ben, I'm going to call and see if you have anything that you'd like to add, please.
Sure. Yeah, Ben Blankley, District 1. I, when, when, when these gating criteria were produced and distributed to us, I, I actually preferred the kind of split decision possibility that pre-K through 5 would be in-person, because we know those kids can't stay home alone, they need an adult there legally, ethically. And so in, in a, in a scenario where we would possibly be able to have kids in-person, I would prefer that kind of, that kind of split. So that's what I've got for now.
Okay, thank you. I'm keeping kind of a running total here of what's going on, so thank you for your opinion. Stan?
Two clarifying questions, one that Ben just brought up, and Ernestine and Ron's brought up, too. Would you consider pre-K, pre-K, we keep saying through 5, but shouldn't we really, if we're going to do a split like that, shouldn't we at least go through middle school? Because I know as a parent, I was never comfortable leaving my middle schoolers at home for any length of time. And I think there's some Kansas Department of Families guidelines on what ages you can and should not leave your kid alone. And it seems like if you're, if you're going to talk about pre-K through 5, shouldn't we really talk about pre-K through middle school? So that's my first clarifying question. And secondly, Julie, on your recommendation, what did you have on the yellow column again? Did you say Sedgwick County Health Department's?
No, I said what we had previously, Wichita Public Schools does not currently have a hybrid learning.
So, so green and yellow, what we have currently?
Just eliminate yellow.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, cool. Got it. And then on orange?
On orange, I, I was proposing we use the Kansas State Department of Ed, which is really, I mean, they only, it's really all of the other entities, KNEA, Kansas State Department of Ed, and Sedgwick County Health, they're all, they all gave basically the same recommendation.
And that's with the understanding and trying to address Mike's question, too. Basically, that orange column is onsite and remote, not onsite slash hybrid and remote.
Correct.
It's, it's onsite and remote.
It's onsite and remote.
And then red.
And the different, and the onsite is for one age, and the remote is for another age.
Correct. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
And I, you know, I'm in disagreement with you, Mike. I, I, I respect all the other entities, and particularly Sedgwick County Health Department. You know, they specified that, that a different requirement for the younger kids than the older kids. And I, I don't feel that I have the ability to go against the medical professionals. I, I don't feel that I have the ability to go against the medical professionals.
Okay. Uh, Ernestine?
Well, that's kind of what I was gonna say. The other thing is, is that um, the reason that I was leaving out the middle school in this is that I wanted us to make a decision. And I, I think we ought to discuss middle school separately. Because elementary school, I think we could definitely put in this category, high school kids, we could definitely say they could handle the remote just fine. I think we ought to talk about the middle school because that is an issue. Now, quite frankly, legally, they can stay home alone. I think that the, the age of, beginning in the sixth grade is when they're old enough to not only stay alone, but be even legally able to babysit under certain circumstances. So that's not gonna get us any place to go that direction. But the issue is, is Ron points out, is that we know good and well what middle schoolers do and what they don't do. And I could tell you from my own experience teaching in the e-school that we've had for twenty years or more, that teaching middle schoolers is like teaching in a popcorn popper. You look one direction and it pops over here. You look this direction and it pops over here. That is not going to be an easy one for us to think about. But I'd like to set that one aside and leave the easy part, which is saying the elementary. And the reason I want to disagree with Mike is that there's a reason why we, for example, don't have elementary kids picked up on the same bus as high school kids is because there is a difference in the way we treat because of their maturity level. And I do think that the elementary kids are more easily trained and by teachers to stay apart. No, that's not true. That's not true. Never mind. Okay, I'm stopping before I get my foot in it any deeper.
Well, and I think also the recommendation from Kansas State Department of Ed is if you have, um, if you have the younger kids going back to school onsite and the high school students remote, that if then, um, there needs to be more social distancing for like, example, a large elementary like Cloud, that then the high school and maybe middle school, depending on what we decide for middle school, then the, those facilities are available um, so that the, there can be adequate social distancing for, for the, for the younger children. So I mean, that's it's not necessarily as important as all these other things, but it's another factor.
Yeah, social distancing is a part of it. With, we're saying come back to school. We're not saying come back to school as if it used to be and everybody sit next to each other and hold hands. We're saying social distancing on, in the classroom. And everybody wearing masks, teacher wearing mask.
Temperature checks.
Okay, Ron?
Well, I think, Ernestine, you might, might wanna say, or you were gonna say, that elementary children are trainable. And middle schoolers are not, along with high schoolers. Well, and you know, the thing is, is I've seen, I, I think we all know that elementary school teachers are probably the most resourceful. They're, they're very, very good at coming up with ideas and ways to train children. You just, you know, you kind of think, wow, I'm amazed all the time I see them uh, with the children. Uh, but I just wanna say that first off, I would say, you know, I wish we could go from K through twelve, you know, onsite, given the numbers that we have. The only reason I'm, I'm saying about eleven and twelve is that way if it might free up space in our buildings, it might free up teachers in our buildings, uh, some staff that, you know, if something happens where a, a teacher or somebody, I mean, that doesn't even mean the teacher has coronavirus or something like that. Maybe they have a family matter that they have to tend to and we might be needing another teacher to step in or whatever. That's why I was just making that compromise actually, you know, with the eleventh and twelfth graders. But again, I, I just wanna say that I, I think that what we have as far as the ten percent to fourteen-nine, uh, what Julie was referring to, uh, and again, I'm gonna say that I, I would like to see that would be K through uh, ten instead of just K through um, five. And if that doesn't work, then yes, K through eight. Ten. Sophomores. Yeah, because I, I mean, again, I speak from experience, you know, sophomores and freshmen, uh, they, there's, there's still you know, you, you kind of wonder, hey, what's going on here? Are you a middle schooler or are you a high schooler? But um, that's why I put that in there, you know. But definitely, I would say K through eight for sure, uh, onsite. And I think Ernestine was alluding to that, you know, this, something that um, it has to do with their maturity level and their development. And again, we need to look at a, at the social emotional well-being of our students, so, and that, that's a critical age. And that's why I'm kind of teetering on the ninth and tenth because that social emotional development starts to kick in at that time, starts to really take hold. And so if we're not careful, um, you know, there, there's some damaging effects that can arise from uh, just in-person school.
Okay. I, I, I want to address earlier, it was said, there's not a yellow column. I think that's wrong. And let me tell you why. If you look at the Kansas State Department of Ed's green, yellow, orange and red, red is clear. Everybody's out. Orange, that's where the discussion that we're having right now is. That pre-K five or pre-K eight or pre-K ten, whatever, can be onsite. And then the others would be remote. What I see as yellow is that pre-K twelve could be onsite. And again, this is the parent's choice. We already have a remote. But the ones who've chosen the onsite, if we're in the yellow column by whatever definitions we decide, then all of our kids could be onsite.
That's a good point.
And, and it, on the orange, then's when we split K-five or whatever.
Yeah. Good point, good point. I was wrong.
I'm, I'm gonna take back Mike's comment and we should be at Kansas State Department of Ed on the yellow also.
Yeah, i- if we just realize that we don't have a hybrid. They suggest onsite and hybrid. We don't have hybrid. So we, we would have, the yellow would allow all of our students who have chosen to, to come back to school.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mike?
Okay, I'll reiterate what I said before. We, we voted as a board to have three choices. EI, remote for the, the kids that chose not to go into EI. EI is its own little five-hundred-student school over somewhere in the hills. So it, none of this group has anything to do with them. That's what they're gonna do is, is they're doing that. We, you know, we don't have to decide anything for those folks. You know, we've got forty-six thousand other kids that are gonna go, they're gonna go to school or they're onsite or they're either gonna be that or they're my school remote, which is remote. We don't have, we chose as a board not to have the two other options in our criteria. So we've only got three options. And while the, the column headings are confusing, you know, the, the remote is my school remote, not remote, remote, if that makes sense and clears it up.
That's exactly right.
And then the onsite is we're boots on the, in the building, sitting in desks and learning from a teacher face-to-face at thirty feet away. So what I, with that said, and hopefully, I'm saying that correctly and if I'm not, please, please correct me because I wanna make sure I'm right and our parents are understanding where we're at. What I'd like to do is we, we've all kind of given our opinions and I think they're all good. I'd like to start narrowing them down to to uh, ruin them into something that we can give the superintendent in a couple of days. And if, you know, and, and how I'd like to do that is, is we can start with onsite and how would we would go to school on September the eighth? What criteria would we take to go to, to school the first day of school? And what would kick us out of onsite? What percentages and how would that look? And then go to remote, which we would kind of, already kind of dictate what we're gonna do if we're gonna kick them out of the schools at twenty-five percent testing positive. And it's pretty clear that at twenty-five percent, we're going to remote. So, I mean, that would clarify that up. But I think, you know, we've, we've given it a lot of thought and there's a lot of good ideas on the table. And I think we need to narrow them down to maybe two or three and then we can sleep on them and and uh, and decide on the twentieth.
Maybe we should take one column at a time. Well.
That's what, that's what I'm recommending.
I would, I would recommend that we, because we have thrown out lots of ideas. And the onsite, the green column, basically is everybody's coming back to school. The only question in that area was whether or not there was a vaccine available. And I think we can give that directive now to the superintendent to bring that column back as everybody's back in school if it's below five percent, which, I mean, five percent or below, cuz that's what all of these have recommended.
But Cheryl, I have a feeling that our, my school is going to be popular and that it may, even after COVID is gone, may be a new thing that this district, but, but I understand that we, that's an issue for another board on another year.
That's correct. I mean, I do think that parents are gonna get, like the my school remote, some of them. But a lot of our parents really are anxious for their kids to get back in school.
Right.
So we will have a green column where we will offer school, even if we adjust it. We will still offer school. The yellow column, and I've been trying to take notes as we've been moving through this, so you all tell me if I'm way off. I think the biggest thing we're arguing about in the yellow column is the percentages.
It says in our line there, which top public schools, WPS does not currently have a hybrid learning model.
That's correct. And that's not changing.
We don't, we're not gonna change that. So we don't need to talk about my school or onsite hybrid at all. The yellow.
We're just scratching the hybrid word, Mike. Hybrid is Xed out.
Just scratch it out, the word hybrid.
Yeah, hybrid, on both the yellow and the orange, hybrid is Xed out. So what she brings back to us, we'll not have hybrid on it.
Then what's the difference between green and yellow if they're both onsite?
The, the difference is the percentages.
Wouldn't we move all those to one column?
Well, we can do anything we want, Mike.
I understand that. I'm, I'm trying not to be.
We need both a green and yellow.
Cuz I see green as just like it was two years ago. Everybody comes back to school. I don't see yellow as that.
Exactly.
We're coming in with a whole lot of precautions in yellow that we may not have to have when we finally get over this and, and go back to green.
And yellow is the parent choice too. The thing is, is that if they're already choosing remote, then they just, the my school remote, they do that. What we're deciding on the yellow is then what do we do with the kids that were in the, that chose to be on campus?
That's correct.
And the difference is the ten, the ten percent cutoff. If there's less than ten percent, they're gonna come to, come on campus. If there's more than ten percent, they're gonna stay home and get remote teaching.
Okay, Dr. Thompson just explained this to me with a pen very quickly. She did a very good job and I understand it. And it, again, it's onsite, remote, which is my school remote. And, and I'm sorry, I, I left those folks out of this. We don't need to build criteria for them. They're my school remote.
That's right. Right.
So we don't need to build, we need to build criteria for going to school for onsite, a hundred percent, or not a hundred percent, but onsite kids, going to a classroom paradigm with a teacher standing in front of them teaching. And we need to, to figure out how to take those kids from there to remote. Because the other two are already taking care of themselves. So we just need to know how to enter and how to exit both of those two columns.
Well, the difference is, Mike, that some of us on, on here think that there, think that there still should be elementary versus secondary, wherever that secondary starts. Whereas you think everybody. And so that, so that's the reason why some of us think there need to be a yellow column. Because some of us believe that the lower level is gonna be handled different than the secondary, again, depending on where that starts. So, I mean, that, that's where the difference is here, is, is you're looking at all, all kids and some of the rest of us are looking at younger kids versus older kids.
And I, and I understand what you're saying. I'm not, not arguing that point. And that's a point that we need to put into the, the numbers. But the hybrid number, the hybrid, the yellow, as I was, like I said, Dr. Thompson's got me straightened out on this and I'm a hundred percent know what I'm talking about now. Because she's a great teacher. After ninety-nine years of teaching, she's, she's learned how to teach old guys like me.
It's those elementary teachers.
But uh, the, you know, the, the my school remote kids are already, first day of school, they're gonna be in my school remote.
That's right.
So we don't.
And we're not concerned about them.
We don't ca, I don't wanna say we don't care about them. We don't care about them. They're already doing their deal and, and they're moving on and the EI guys are doing what they're doing. So we don't have to worry about it. It's the kids now, part of the, the subset of what we're talking about would be K through five or K through ten or K through whatever, as part of coming back, we would, if we're gonna break that apart. And just for, for ease of conversation, I'm just using everybody. And then if we, we need to break it up, then I think we can do that. But I think, I think we're close enough to give two or three different criteria so we can move on to the next step, which is figuring out what we're gonna do from there.
Yeah. What the difference I see between the yellow and the orange is the, on the onsite for the yellow, we're talking about all of our grades being able to come back to school.
Tell me, I'm color, I'm sorry, I'm colorblind. Which one of these is orange?
Oh, the third one. It's green, yellow, orange and red.
That's what I thought, but I don't see orange on there.
The orange color, the third column, we're talking about having our early kids, pre-K five or pre-K eight, coming back onsite. But then the high school kids being remote, doing remote. Because they tend to carry the, spread the disease more and so on. So that's the difference between those two columns. And we do need both of those columns because that's a big difference.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're talking about is, is doing a hybrid where.
No, no hybrids. No hybrids.
Hold on. You're, you're taking half, you're taking part of the kids and you're putting them in full remote?
The high school kids, yes. If it reaches a certain percentage, the high school kids would go remote.
Okay, well, that's a, that's an option that we have, but that's not what we agreed on the other day and that's what I'm going off of. We agreed on being onsite and remote and EI Academy.
And, and what, and what we are saying is that if our percentages get too high, whatever that too high is, then everybody goes remote.
I understand that. But what you're saying to me now.
In this case, the high school kids go remote.
One of the criteria that we're gonna present to the, to the district is that the tenth and, or eleventh and twelfth graders are full remote the entire year.
I haven't heard that as a presentation.
Mike, you missed, you may have misunderstood what I said. Eleven and twelve, just for beginning of school. And I wasn't referring to the, the whole entire year.
So you're talking about at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Having K through nine go to school and eleven and twelve stay home?
Correct. K through ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're in the orange.
If we're in the orange? Okay.
The easiest, I don't know if this helps, but.
Okay, Stan?
I don't know if this helps, but
I, I understand that and I appreciate that. But, but again, and I don't mind changing. If we wanna come up with a hybrid option and make the district do that.
It's not a hybrid. Hybrid out. No hybrid.
Okay, Stan? Stan, well, uh, just a minute, Ernestine. It's Stan's turn.
That's okay. I swallowed wrong. Go ahead.
Okay, Ernestine?
Well, the thing is, is that you're meaning if we want to not have them all one or the other, you're using the word hybrid. The problem is within the context of education, hybrid means one child will someday be on campus and some days be at home. That's why we're saying we don't do hybrid. That's why we're scratching hybrid. What we are. What we are saying is, is as if we have an education system from K through eight, and all of those are gonna be handled this way if it's under ten percent, and this way if it's above ten percent. Then the high school, we're, we're doing in a totally different way, because high schoolers are old enough, they're adults, in the sense of being able to spread the COVID virus, and that's a danger, more dangerous situation. So, the issue is, yes, having two different, two different ideas for what, but again, we're only talking if it's serious enough that we might, under normal circumstances, have to do like we did last March, send everybody home, or send everybody, have everybody come back. And we're saying it's neither all this way or all this way. We're saying elementary could come onto campus, but the high school kids stay home. Your cooties wouldn't want.
All right, Julie?
I'd, I'd like to make a revised proposal. Um, I'd like to propose that in the green, we follow Sedgwick County Health Department's square. In the yellow, we follow Kansas State Department of Education, with still a secondary discussion on where we're gonna make the break, whether we're gonna make the break at, um, sixth grade, whether we're gonna, we're gonna make the break at tenth grade, whether we're gonna make the break at eleventh grade. Uh, but to use Kansas State Department of Education's block in the yellow, to use Kansas State Department of Education's block in the orange, and to use Sedgwick County Health Department's block in the red. That's my proposal with the discussion yet to be ensued regarding the break.
What I would sugge, I'm okay with that, and what I would suggest is to Superintendent Allison, uh, no, Superintendent Thompson.
Will you come back?
No, 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 no. We want you here, sorry, Dr. Thompson.
You're not leaving us, girl.
You're, you're, you're gonna make me lose my train of thought.
Gil Alvarez.
I would like to suggest that we give her the, the option of bringing back a couple of models with, because we're debating about eighth or tenth or whatever, she needs to have some time to talk to her people and get some input from the secondary people and the others, because that, that may influence what we see. So, if you could have that discussion and then give us some guidance on that, because that's the one piece that we're sitting up here kind of floundering with, is whether we stop at fifth or eighth or tenth. So, if you can give us some guidance on that.
I'm gonna want as much clarity as I can from you, so I'm gonna have my, um, secondary, um, assistant supervisor please join me at the mic, and we're gonna have some discussion with you, um, as it relates to your break. And then you can make the decision where you want the break to be.
Okay.
Okay?
I just didn't like the idea of us not having input from your staff.
Can we have a five-minute break before we do that?
Sure.
Yes.
Sure.
We can have, we've had a request for a five-minute break. So, we will resume at, uh, seven forty-five. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Uh, Dr. Thompson?
Uh, I asked, um, Mr. Alvarez to come and kind of talk us through the implications so that you all can make the decision where you want the split, but what that would mean at the high school, because that's what they're talking about, splitting in the middle of a high school, and the implications that would have with, with teaching. Thank you.
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and did wanna speak a little bit about if we go ninth and tenth, it's different than eleven and twelve, we do have classes, multiple classes, that have tenth and eleventh graders together. We also have some ninth and tenth grade levels together that could cause, uh, some, some difficulties in regards to a teacher-teaching, not only face-to-face but and remotely, trying to separate out those sections. So, I did, it would almost be our recommendation to keep all high school together, all middle school together, so we can, um, hopefully not have to deal with those types of scheduling conflicts.
Okay. Ernestine?
Well. One of the important things about these decisions that we're making is, we are also concerned about teachers. And the thing is, is that if high school kids are more likely to be the carriers, if they've come from home, that is also more likely to spread to our staff and teachers. So, that makes it so that, from my point of view, the high school being remote, if it's a ten percent or above, and that even, I'm even comfortable with it being remote at the five to ten percent level, because I really do think that keeping our teachers safe is one of the important things in all of this. The elementary kids, I do think that, that, it's not like they're right in the face of the teacher. That isn't saying I don't respect the teachers and care about teachers that are in a situation with all of these kids coming from home. I don't know what to do, but I do think that it's more likely that if we had the elementary and have the high school kids on remote. But I was just telling Ron, I just remembered the year I taught ninth grade. And it was only one year. After that, I went, went to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
Okay. I, I wanna clarify that, the directions that we're giving the superintendent. What I'm hearing you say is that we wanna chart that my decision-making guide that we have done, we want to include the Sedgwick County Health Department's area in the green. And then we want to include the onsite in yellow from the Kansas State Department of Education.
With the added words, as the parents have chosen, so that those that are doing my school remote are not even involved.
That's, yes, and we just need to make that clear in the whole document.
Yes.
Perfect.
On the whole document. My question in that area, and also in the orange area, which is also under the Kansas State Department of Ed, those percentages are there. In yellow, it's five point one to nine point nine percent, and in orange, it is ten to fourteen point nine. Do you want those percentages left in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm hearing consensus on that. Then in the orange, again, it's at the Kansas State Department of Education, and we would have, uh, the onsite for pre-K eight, and then remote for ten through twelve. Nine to twelve, yeah, thank you, nine to twelve. Is that correct?
I'm okay with that. My preference is leaving it the same, but I'm okay to defer to the consensus if you are to change through middle school.
Thank you. Then on the red area, it would, we are again dropping down to the Sedgwick County Health Department. So, we've kind of got, um, the information, and we, we leave the pieces that we have down below, but we add these things to them. Is that correct?
Yes, I want to add one thing.
Okay.
And that's, we're just liking the wording of these things. The percentages are identical to the Sedgwick County Health Department's recommendations.
Yes.
This, the percentage of, um, when we would do one thing or the other is no different than Sedgwick County Health Department. We are not defying the Health Department's advice, we are just talking about which wording we like on the way that people have worded it.
That's correct. Okay?
So, no, we aren't taking.
So, that gives us then a doc, she can put together a document to bring back to us to look at, to help make the decision on which area we, we vote on and where we are. Ben, are you, do you have any questions on that?
Can, can I have some clarity on that?
Yeah, just a second, let me see if Ben has any questions. Ben?
Yes, Ben Blackley, District One. I, I understand the consensus, uh, going with pre-K through eight in person in an orange model. I, I still would prefer to go with the original recommendation of pre-K to five as, as our in-person for orange, but I understand that the consensus is leaning to eighth grade instead.
Okay, that's great. And, and we will have a chance to actually vote on Thursday. Now, we're just kind of getting consensus, and around the room, I think we kind of have it, so, thank you. Your question, Dr. Thompson?
On my notes, I just wanted to be clear, uh, for staff as we build these, on yellow, you want it to read, um, onsite, remote for pre-K through eight.
No remote.
Yes.
Well, there's always, the, the my school remote is always available.
That's what I'm talking about, mhm. And then.
For the yellow, it's pre-K through twelve.
No.
That's why I asked the question, because I don't think you clarified that for me.
Okay, that's, let's make sure that we're all clear. What I have down, and, and you took, you guys, I'm just trying to, I have yellow as onsite, pre-K twelve, and orange onsite, pre-K eight, and nine, twelve is remote.
Gotcha.
Yes, that's what I have.
Okay, that's, that's what I had, and I wanted to make sure we were right.
That's correct.
So, the yellow is?
Pre-K twelve.
And that's the parent choice.
That's the parent choice, if the parent chooses onsite, they can do onsite if we're in yellow, all grades.
Okay, gotcha.
And if we're in orange, we do onsite for our pre-K eight, and our nine through twelve is, is my school remote. Okay. Have you gotten enough direction for that so that we can move?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next thing that we need to make some decisions on are the.
But you said you wanted me to bring several models, and let me make sure.
You, you do what you feel like you need to do, but I think we've given you direction.
Yes, you said you wanted to have two models brought in, two examples. You gave me one, going from Sedgwick County, um, Health Department on green, to, um, Kansas State Department of, Sedgwick County Health Department on green, Kansas State Department of Ed on yellow, Kansas State Department of Ed on, uh, orange, and then, uh, a red, you wanted me to move back to Sedgwick County Health Department.
If we, if we wanted a second one, we could.
You gave me a second one, I wanna make sure I got it. The second one, you asked me to be green, onsite, Wichita Public Schools.
No, that one's not an option.
Well, I think we include.
You did.
We include it, we add those two together. So, it's, the second option would have the Wichita Public Schools in each category, plus the other, other pieces.
I got you. And, and that's only one, so I'm fine, that's what you all want.
I want to suggest that we use the language additions.
Yes, yeah.
With the additions that they just proposed.
Right.
Added to this document.
That's correct.
That's, that's fine, then you only have one to choose from. Okay.
I mean, we could have a second one, Cheryl, if we want.
We don't, I don't think we need it if we're, if we're comfortable.
Okay. I was gonna say, the second one could.
Because she gave a second one, Julie gave a second.
Well, the second one could be Ben and I's preference of breaking it at, uh, pre-K to five in lieu of going clear through middle school.
It's up to you, I mean, I'm.
I would like to suggest that the Sedgwick County wording is good in the sense that it says, with a steady decreasing of new cases, follow Sedgwick County Health Department's safe-opening principles. I like, I like that wording, if we could put that in.
Uh, where are you seeing it, I'm sorry?
On the Sedgwick County Health Department.
Can I see that?
Under yellow, it's got it most clearly stated, but under each one of them, it has de, with the steady or decreasing new cases. And I like that so that it gives people the concept that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, Ron?
And then the safe-opening principles.
Ron?
Well, I'm still gonna push for that ninth grade.
Okay.
K through nine. Mr. Alvarez, uh, mentioned about classes that sophomores and freshmen have, have, uh, together with juniors and seniors. I would say that the freshmen probably have less than the sophomores by far, but I can understand where that could be a problem, but also, ninth grade, ninth graders, this is their first year in the high school, and, uh, their experience to go to school in person, I think, is, um, very important. But, again, I mean, it's something I, I, I'd like to see K through nine versus K through eight.
In the orange, you'd rather see K nine?
In the orange, correct.
Okay, you could bring that back as an option, just put K nine instead of K eight in orange. Is that clear?
And Dr. Thompson, if there's a lot of, I mean, if there's a lot of that, you know, overlap with teachers, the amount of preps that they have with, you know, all the students, the blended classrooms that they have, I mean, I fully understand, but I just wanna put that out there for, um, you know, the freshmen that are coming in, uh, their experience in, in our schools. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Mike?
Okay, uh, Dr. Luths, quick, quick question, based on the criteria that we just gave out, if you have it in front of you, what, on September the eighth, first day of school, what would we be doing?
On the first day of school?
How about you all have that discussion? Seriously?
No, I mean, because we gave, we just gave two different criteria, and I'm curious to see where that fits with.
That's, that's what we're trying to get from you all. We're, we're, I mean.
I mean.
If you base it on what the data shows today at eleven point four.
Right.
As the rolling average, that puts you in the orange, where we would have whatever you determine, pre-K through eight or nine, or whatever you determine, would be onsite in nine through twelve, or whatever that configuration is, would be remote.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's all we can do, it's, because basically what it says here is August nineteenth, which is two days from today. That determines what we do September the eighth.
That is correct.
So, before we make our decision, our criteria is already, do we wanna change that? Criteria date to be not August the nineteenth, but August the twenty-first, or August the something like that?
Well, I think we have promised our community that on the twentieth, which is Thursday, which we would be using the data from the day before, because that's the most current data we could get, we would be making a decision so they would know.
Okay, well, that, that's fine, I just wanna throw that out there, because we are making a decision after our, our decision has been made.
Well, I think the one piece that we need to make sure is that, and this is something we've kind of talked about, but we haven't really come to consensus on, is what kind of a timeframe are we talking about? They come back September the eighth, are we having this data carry us through the first nine weeks, the first semester, what are we?
And, and that's why I wanted you guys to, to tell us.
Yeah, and I, and honestly, I've got some ideas on that, surprise, surprise.
Okay.
Um, if I can read it, I'm getting old. If we start up the way it was just suggested we might start up, um, if we go online only or any, anything that's online only, I would say that we would do that for a full semester and reevaluate for the spring. So, in other words, we wouldn't be going in and out of school, once we go remote, we stay remote until the end of the semester. And, uh, that way we can evaluate for the spring. If we go no remote, or we go any kind of remote, there would be no sports, there would be no after-school programs, there would be no band, no latchkey. Teachers would, we would expect our teachers in that situation to, to teach from the school classroom, and, so that they can have the support of the district and have the, the criteria that they're teaching to right there in their classroom, and not at home. It would also mean that the expectation that we would have for, for learning would be as high as we would have it if we were face-to-face. In other words, our, uh, our, uh, can't think of the word now, but our annual testing would be, we'd need to meet our goals based on criteria that's, was given last year. And sadly, if we do that, I'm sure there's gonna be people that we're gonna have to lay off, and if there's extra people that we, excess people, we'd have to lay them off. And I don't know who that would be, if it would be, um, it wouldn't be teachers, because we'd need them in the classroom, but, um, aides and those types of folks, we may have to, to lay off until we come back to school again. If we go face-to-face school, I've got a list of those two, all sports would be played with modifications, and one of those modifications would be starting, football is our worst one, and I agree with that, and I think what we should do is start what I would call, in a bubble, where we only play two-five-nine schools, we don't play outside of our own district. And, uh, all after, any other, any other all after-school activities would be allowed as possible, except for wrestling, we'd have to look at wrestling when it came time to determine where we were at, because that's the other sport that's pretty face-to-face. We'd also have to look at the Title IX implications of. We'd also have to look at the Title IX implications of stopping football or stopping wrestling. Because I know we have a girls' wrestling team now, so that's important to us also. All safety precautions would be followed without exceptions and how we would control what happens away from the school is gonna be tough because if our teachers go out, our administration goes out and parties at the lake on the weekend and comes back, we're gonna be bringing the virus back in so that we can't control that, we can't tell our teachers not to do that. And I'd like to say that we can't have it both ways, but if we're not online, we're online and we, we can't please everybody at the same time. That's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I want some clarification, Dr. Thompson, please, because if we're, we are talking about my school remote when we're talking orange, correct? That, that our kids can be onsite and then our high school kids would be doing my school remote, correct?
That. That is correct, what you all shared with us that you wanted, yes.
Okay, and in my school remote, have we not made the statement that kids still could participate in activities? Extracurricular activities and sports?
We did say that they could participate in activities and sports as long as they had one class that they had on s- okay, I'm gonna stop talking before I say something in the atmosphere.
We need clarification.
I'm looking at him and he's looking at me like, let me come, let me come. So how about we just let?
You can read my lips?
Yes, I can, I can.
Okay, I'm Jay Means, I'm the District Athletic Director. We have worked with Kasia to answer those questions and the way we have my remote, my school remote, and also the way we have EI Academy set up, they could be eligible to participate in sports even though they would not be coming into the building. It gets catchy in that, in the old version of the virtual school policy, if we had a student who was attending Andover Virtual School, for instance, then they would actually be required to attend one class in their base school building to be eligible. So that's where sometimes that gets confusion, but the way we have things set up, as long as they're in my remote or in our EI Academy, as long as they meet the other eligibility requirements, they would be eligible to participate.
Do we need to change that in policy? Current policy that we already have or is it already changed?
As far as our policy?
Uh-huh, is it a policy or is it, is it a board policy or is it just a policy that you all have in the athletic?
It, it actually, that policy we've, we're following from Kasia, so we just clarified there and they made the change this year knowing there could be a lot of students doing remote learning.
Okay.
Quick question and Dr. Thompson, if you want to jump in here. You know, before when we were talking about virtual learning, now the, virtual learning to me is different than remote learning. Remote learning is we have to do it, virtual is a choice. So therefore, before when we were talking about virtual and athletics, it was one thing, but now because we're telling kids to stay home because it's unhealthy to be at school and be in contact, that's why I said no sports if we're in any kind of remote because at that point in time, we're doing it for health reasons, not choice reasons. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Does that change your position? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, I, I would like to comment on that. I, I, I think a couple things, like for instance, using this summertime, we set up some very specific guidelines and our kids have been active and working out and we have been very successful with that. So what, what I would say is that even if we're doing some remote learning, it, we have smaller groups, we're not talking about a thousand kids showing up in the building. We have much greater control because we do have that smaller groups. And our kids want to do whatever they can and our coaches do too, to be able to participate. So they have been very active in following all the guidelines and trying to do everything they can. And, and so we, if we go all remote, I would almost actually, and I hope I'm answering your question, Mike, I would almost actually say it is more important if we go completely my remote because we talk about kids making connections and I know this can't be every kid, but we would have all these kids that could still have that connection with their coaches, with their teammates, working together to try to solve a problem that you all are having a hard time solving. I, I get it, but, uh, you know, I think, and Mike, you even mentioned, I am starting to work on schedules where all we would do is play each other. So we're not, if you look at some of these guidelines that are proposed, you know, no getting on buses and traveling in big groups, this would allow us to continue to do that if we stay at home. And, you know, so I've been working on that, I have that plan, you know, in place if that's something that you're interested in too. Did that answer your question, Mike, or did I, I'm sorry if I ran it?
Yes, I did and all the details that you're starting to talk about are your details to come up with and not ours. You know, our crit, we build the criteria and then if you want to take personal cars to school, to, to football games, that's, that's a criteria that, you know, that's up to you guys. I appreciate your, your input, thank you very much.
Okay, and you may just want to stay there in case we have other questions. I, we are moving into the criteria for activities and, and spectators and not only that, but our extracurricular activities, so it's not just sports. It's all the extra kinds of things that our students do in the school setting. For the board, I would like for you to take two documents, one is the criteria on the activities and spectators and the second one is the high-risk activity definitions that Lisa had given us in her presentation. So if you look at her presentation, because it lists the high risk, what they're identifying as high risk. In the K, uh, State Departments, one, they're only talking about sports. In the, the SCHD one, they have band and some other things in there. We're really talking, this, whatever we decide falls into all of our extracurricular activities. JROTC, Academic League, all the kinds of things that we have for students that are over and above school and most of them are done after school. But you have the document that is the criteria cross-reference. There is a, a piece there in all of them that says no all-school activities under yellow and those are activities like pep rallies where the whole school comes together for an activity in a gym or in a auditorium or somewhere. Those are gone if we're in yellow, orange or red. But the what is still there are the, the, what you can have, small group activities where they can do social distancing and so on and so on. So what we need to do as a board is give the superintendent and her team direction on what we want to have done with our extracurricular, including sports, activities. So look over that chart and let's have a little bit of a discussion about it so that she can come back because if you notice down at the bottom, Wichita Public Schools, we didn't even address that. So we need to now. Okay? Clear on what we're asking you to do now?
Yes.
Again, just give direction. Okay. Ernestine?
Well, I still like the Cedric County Health Department one, I think that says it very well that when it's in the yellow, that there's no school, all-school activities and the, uh, but there are activities that can be accommodating the social distancing, the masking and there would be no high-risk activities. It seems to me that at this point and until such time as we would ever in the future come into the green, we're just not gonna have high school, high-risk activities. That's kind of sad, but it's the truth.
Okay, and if we look at the Cedric County Health Department's high-risk definition, it says high-contact sports, basketball, football, wrestling, non-sports activities such as band, which is basically the woodwind and brass instruments where they can't wear a mask, and choir. And then they don't mention a whole lot of other activities, but.
Right.
But, but if you, if you follow their definition, we have no basketball, football or wrestling.
I was, I was looking at the bottom scale, at the bottom of the, down here.
Yes.
That's what I was reading on because it says that no group travel, conditioning and practice may continue with modification and no activities that don't allow for mitigating techniques.
Okay, and what I'm looking at is on this chart where it's in bold, it says no high-risk activities and referring back to what high-risk activities are, definitions are. So, so I want you to be real clear what we're looking at. If we follow the Cedric County Health Department's or any one of these, well, actually it's under the Kansas State Department of Ed and Cedric County Health Department, those two have taken high-risk activities off the table.
Yes.
My question is.
What was Jay, was Jay just?
Okay, Jay?
Were you just referring when you were talking a little while ago about this summer? You know, you've done sports practicing and all of that. Were you referring to high-risk sports when you were talking about that?
Yes, football has been going on all summer long, you know, and I might add, if you paid attention, we did the Kansas Shrine Bowl and those kids were together for almost two weeks and they took all the precautions. They limited the crowd and, and it was quite successful and no issues. So I can't argue with their recommendations, but I have seen where it has been able to work a, as any other sport. But we are prepared to follow your directions and, and do what we can to, to make it work.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page of what we're talking about.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if on the high-risk portion, I mean, I totally agree with everything that Ernestine has said except for that no high-risk activities. I wonder if we could modify that to say that our athletic director would work out detailed guidelines regarding the high-risk activities and give very detailed guidelines relative to how the coaches and, and athletes would perform and detailed guidelines about when those activities have to stop based on, you know, outbreaks or anything that we could, that in that clause, we could have our athletic director work out some specific guidelines that maybe we could look at as a board that might be able to be acceptable to us.
Yeah, I, I would rather have us ha, direct the superintendent and then she can direct Jay or whatever.
Yes, we'll direct, the superintendent works for us, Jay works for the superintendent. So yes, keep, keep the chain of command correct, I apologize for speaking out of turn on that.
Okay, Ron?
If I could mention just one thing too, and I would be happy to share with all of you if you haven't gotten this information, but we actually got guidelines, specific guidelines for safety and all that from Kasia, very specific in each one of our fall activities. So I would be happy to share that with you. So where I'm going, Julia, is a lot of that is already in place, okay?
And, and if you, we could have that available to us on the twentieth?
Uh, I could email that to you as soon as I'm done talking up here. We have a whole packet of information.
Okay, Ron?
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I would agree with the proposal to direct the superintendent to have Mr. Means to provide us that information. And it seems that, well, it's a fact that the Shrine Bowl did go through and so there are some protocols in place for our students to participate in these activities. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands these activities are very important to our students. There's scholarships, there's statistics, a lot of the students, when they go out for sports, a lot of it is statistic-based. So the better the statistics, you know, the, the better the looks that they get from a D-one college versus D-two. Nothing wrong with D-two or D-three, but it's just something our students strive for. So I would say that, you know, I'm, I'm, I propose that we really look into getting our students into these activities because again, going back to the social-emotional learning aspect of our, of our district, we need to have these, our students participate in all kinds of learning across the board. Not just our core learning, but everything from band to, uh, to football, basketball, the whole deal. And so I appreciate what Mr. Means has already accomplished and hopefully we can get some more direction through the superintendent on, on how we can proceed with providing activities for our students. Thank you.
Julie?
I, I already.
Okay, Stan?
I, I think my question was answered, but it does seem, if I, if, just if I had to make a recommendation or suggestion is, um, the yellow column for activities seems to be a bit cautious. Now, if we get into red, obviously I think you're, you, you do pretty much shut down all extra act, extracurricular activities. But I really think the descriptions that are in the yellow column really ought to be moved one column over at least to the orange column. Because if you are in the five-point-one to nine-point-nine range, that's already better than what we are at today and we're already allowing summer conditioning to go on under these conditions. It, it would seem like you could have these activities in these current conditions. So it seems like maybe the description in the yellow ought to be moved over one column to the orange. And that's just one person's opinion.
Okay, and are you looking at the Ken, Cedric County Health Department or the Kansas, which one of those three are you looking?
Either, either one.
Okay, they're pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Okay, Julie?
I, I do have a question about the spectator piece, that we haven't discussed and, and, anyway, just anybody's thoughts on the spectator piece?
Well. Mike?
Well, it'd be my understanding that if we don't have spectators, which I, you know, I would be for having the parents there at least to allow their parents to see their children play their sports before that. But the question would be is if we don't have enough spectators, we don't have enough money to pay the referees? Because that comes out of the athletic budget, is that correct?
I, I can answer that a little bit too. That is one reason why we discussed having our bubble, having it just here so I can reduce costs. I have talked with our CFO, we've had that conversation somewhat and, and we believe that financially, i- if we can limit some costs that we would have enough money to function for the year, Mike, and, and have those competitions and have those athletic sports. But I think we would have to make some of those concessions that we're not gonna do as much traveling. I've already talked with athletic directors saying right now, we're gonna put on hold future uniform purchases, ways that we can take the money we have and be able to operate this year if we are faced with, with the limited or no admissions for spectators.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great, that's good news.
As a recommendation to the, to what you're talking about Cheryl, I would recommend that we just have parents be in attendance. The reason I'm saying that is if we say we can have family, all of a sudden the families become very extended and all of a sudden one family has twenty people in it and surprise, surprise and. Well, that's what I'm talking about, if you start talking about, if it's direct family, lives in the house with them, I could see him being in the, in the crowd.
You'd say social distance though?
Well, they'd have to follow twenty other rules. Well, they'd have to follow 20 other rules that we don't want to get into right now, but I think we ought to limit it to the family only, in the household, so that we can control that, and we're not going, well, you're, you're a, can't bring your uncle, and we've got to send people away. Surely that would be clear enough to understand. That would be my suggestion for the spectators, because I think that would give us, in all our football stadiums, all our basketballs, gyms and everything else, we've got enough room to, to separate, so I would go with that.
Okay. Ben, do you have any comments to add to this discussion?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District One. As far as extracurriculars, I, I would agree with Stan that the, that the recommendations in yellow seem to be more aligned with recommendation, with orange in that what we're doing today is, is so far working. I would prefer in, in the, in the orange column that we would, we'd mandate that we would modify as much activities for outside as possible. We continue doing all the most recent mitigations for disease transmission, like masks when you're sitting on sidelines, and cleaning equipment frequently. Like, like Mike said, league-only play, I think is an important thing because we can control fairly well what our, what our kiddos, 259 kiddos are doing. But once it gets outside, that, that boundary, who, who really knows what kind of precautions the, the other school districts are taking? And then I would also say that, that we should have no spectators, maybe experiment with live streaming, kind of like how we're live streaming this meeting. We did add fiber to all of the stadiums, I think last year, so that is probably more of a possibility now than it was in the past. And of course, in the buildings, we've got decent internet now too. So, that would be my suggestions, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much. What I'm hearing, to summarize and give direction to the superintendent, I'm hearing that we're using the Sedgwick County Health Department's statement, moving it to orange, and taking out the no-high-risk activities and putting in place of that that the administration provides detailed guidelines on high-risk activities. And that we've had two different statements on spectators, one was no spectators and the other was limited to family only. Can I kind of get a consensus on what direction we think we want to give to her, no or family only? Ron?
I'm okay with the family only, if we could do the mitigating behaviors, I just don't want to have a whole crowd up there.
Oh, I, I agree, we've got to put that in where they're six foot apart. They can sit together as a family, so a mother can bring her two little kids, but they're together and six foot away from them isn't it, other people? Okay, Ron?
Well, I would say could, what Ben suggested as far as the streaming, could we blend that with the-
With the family only?
With the high-attended sports such as football and basketball, varsity. Those are the ones I think that are probably going to be the most crowded, but my experience is it, it always is.
And I think that's a directive that we can ask the superintendent to look at. I don't know the functioning capability if we have that in all of our gyms, et cetera. Yeah, they'd, they'll have to check it out.
I could probably-
And see if there's any extra expenses for that.
Yeah, I could probably answer some of that question. You know, if we're talking varsity football in our stadiums, we probably, we do have some of those capabilities using one of the programs actually that you approved, our Huddle program. But we don't, you know, when I get to non-varsity football, for instance, and we're here at North High out there, we don't have the Wi-Fi capabilities. But what we have discussed is at the very least can, or I'll go to varsity soccer out there at North, they don't have those Wi-Fi capabilities. But at the very least, if we will band together and videotape it to where it could be uploaded and watched at another time. We've already been starting to, to discuss some of, of those issues and trying to make it work any way we can if we are going to limit spectators and, and I, we already have talked about plans for that also. One plan also we talked about, for instance, is taking the seating capacity, then figuring out that percentage, okay, do we let a percentage in? Or do we come up with that pass list for parents and siblings that are living at home that we know, you're not going to leave a five-year-old at home to go watch a football game? So, we, we have some of those thoughts and plans in place. I'll be able to work with the superintendent very closely and, and quickly to get those things solved for you.
I'm more concerned about the inside. Mike?
One of the, the things that happens at football games, Jay, is all the little kids start running around together. We would have to quarantine that from happening.
Sure, and, and mask up, yes, we talk, but I would, would add that if we're limiting it to the families and their siblings, we won't quite have as many children as, might have been dropped off too. But yes, you know, those are those issues we have to deal with. To address the indoor, you know, at least right now, we're, we're talking fall sports. That's volleyball is the only indoor sport. And if we limit the crowds, we've already talked about opening up more of the bleachers than we have in the past. Our, our seating capacity in, in our new gyms are such that we can, we can make that work with very limited adjustments as long as we're limiting it. We should have plenty of room to social distance.
Okay. All right, do you understand kind of what we would like to see back?
Yes, we are very clear.
I, I do think one of the things that we want to make clear is the statement, no all-school activities. And that doesn't necessarily have to be in our guidelines, but it needs to be very clear to buildings that we're talking about pep's, pep assemblies, we're talking about, you know, anything where we gather every kid in the building or a good share of the kids in a building in one location.
You've, you, we're very clear on sports, would you please clarify for any non-sport activities?
Well, I, I think we follow the same rules with non-sport activities. You know, the, the, the health department talks about band in the sense of brass and wind, in brass and woodwind instruments, because those are instruments that you have to have your mouth open in order to be able to play them. And also choir. I, I think, this is my statement, I'd like to see you come back after you've talked to some of your, your staff and give us some idea of what we're talking about, because I think we're pretty clear. We want people six foot apart, we want to limit contact as much as we possibly can. We may reduce our choirs to smaller groups so we can distance, but, but you need to help us address that.
We may have some inform-
We probably have some information for you now, if you are interested in hearing that to give further direction.
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and there are definitely some other departments that we'll be looking at, like JRTC for their drill meets, the concerts per se. I would like to talk with Sean Chastain, because as you were talking, I'm thinking of ways that we could still honor concerts, even if we had to limit the crowds or no crowds, but at least maybe in the gym where they're further spread apart, where social distancing can be, can be done at a greater distance. So, there are some, I think, some creative ideas that can be done. And I know if I talk to Sean Chastain about some of the performing arts and what they're looking at, but I know JRTC is another one, that we could limit crowds as well, and they could wear masks still doing their drills that, to mitigate any, any spread, they can do that as well. So, they're all willing to do whatever they need to do to protect their students, protect their staff, protect themselves and the, and the spectators to be able to do their, their particular performance.
And I think it's important that we continue those activities, because those are equally as important to some students as football is to others. But we just have to make sure we're keeping our kids and our staff as safe as we possibly can. Dr. Thompson, did you?
So, what I hear you doing, what I hear you saying is that you would like for us to use the Sedgwick County Health Department's documents, sections on this particular section, and taking the yellow and moving it over to the orange, and allowing spectators, family in the home, and try to come up and see how many of these ballgames we could livestream as much as possible. And then I hear you saying in the non-sports activities such as band or choir, that you would like for us to continue to allow them to do their high-risk activities as well, but put in mitigation techniques.
Could there be a concert outside?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right on target, I think that's kind of, are you all okay with that?
Well, you asked earlier for feedback from us regarding spectators, whether we preferred no spectators or families. I, I, I go with Ben on no spectators, but, you know, if everybody else says family, then we're in the minor, then Ben and I are in the minority in the, whatever you want to say.
I, I think that's the item that you may want to bring both back to us, and then we can vote on it next week, because we can't vote tonight. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
There's one more decision that we need to make tonight, and we've walked around it and talked about it, but we really, because of our community, we need to decide, how long are we making this decision for? We're going to make it on the 20th, it will start on September the 8th. Are we looking at nine weeks? Are we looking at a semester? Are we, what is your preference? Are we looking at three weeks? Because our staff and our students and our parents need to know, here's the decision, we're in whatever color we're in when we vote on, on Thursday. But we're going to hold to that unless there's something that's, I mean, we really go cattywampus, then we'll call you back as a board. But if, if everything is just kind of going along, we're not going to worry if it goes from one percentage to a one percentage more, for how long? Any, Julie, you're up.
I, I was up on the last discussion. You didn't take off.
I'm behind, Ron?
I propose nine weeks, and I think one of the reasons why is because that's, well, it's, you know, traditional end of the nine-week grading period. It's not too long, it's not too short, and so it's, you know, we're heading into what some would see as flu season about that time as well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things to consider about that time at nine weeks. I, I would just propose the nine weeks as a, as a point.
So, I hear you asking for nine weeks now. I want to make it clear, if we're talking about nine weeks, we're talking for us to make the decision two weeks ahead of that. So, it would be nine weeks with our decision on the 20th until nine weeks later, which would be before the grading period ends, but we've got to let parents, we've got to give parents-
We say nine weeks.
Do you, we have to, as a board, we have to make a decision, giving our parents enough time to find a babysitter or whatever.
Understood.
So, so, are we okay with that?
I'm seeing it as the nine-week grading period.
Yes.
That we make the decision next week, based on our best knowledge that we have next week. But whatever decision we make, it would be for the first nine weeks of the semester.
And then we would make the decision at the end of the nine weeks for the next, so it would run, we'd run two weeks further past that, because we've got to give, we can't just decide on a Monday night, and then we change it on Tuesday, that doesn't work for parents.
Right, we would have a board meeting before the end of the nine weeks to decide-
What would happen at the start of the next nine weeks?
Right.
I'm okay with that.
And, and November the 6th is the end of the-
Okay, so we would, whatever our board meeting is before that, we would make the decision for the next nine weeks. But it would run through the end of the nine weeks.
Two weeks before that nine-week period.
Yeah, well, we have, I don't know what our board meeting is in November, but we can look that up. Okay, Mike?
I would propose that we go for the entire semester. Once, you know, once we go, we go and we leave it alone, because, especially the fall semester, because you've got Thanksgivings and you've got Christmas, you've got all these other things going on, and it'd be hard to come, if we came back in nine weeks, it would be a little more difficult. You know, I think, and the other question would, let's not confuse it, but I would be for a semester because just the, everything that's going on, and, and it would be easier for a parent to get a babysitter as needed. You know, that's what I'm thinking about is home, what are we going to do at home and, and those types of things.
Right, okay, I'm going to ask the superintendent to bring both back, and then we can vote on it. Because we can't vote tonight, so I'm hearing a difference in not consensus. One is nine weeks, one is a semester. If you just bring that back as a proposal for have both, we can vote on it at our Thursday meeting.
Is there any reason why somebody would think that less than nine weeks was, was good? I can't.
I, I'd like to go in nine weeks or a semester chunks, personally. Okay, I think we've answered the questions. Dr. Thompson, do you have other questions for us?
And I am only bringing back one, Lisa will help me. We're going to bring back one grid, well, let me see, one grading criteria, you only want one.
Grading criteria, oh, yes, you're talking about what we decided first.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay.
And then, Dr. Thompson, if anybody wanted to make an, we have one proposal, and then if anybody wanted to make an amendment or make a vote or attempt to get a, Thursday I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You, you have your one proposal there, and if anybody wanted to make an amendment on Thursday to make a change, that way we have somewhere to start.
Yes.
And then even if we have to split up some, a couple votes, where we vote on three or four different ways on how to do it, then, then you've got your other options as well.
That is cor- okay, so I will just bring what you asked me to bring, and then you all can make decisions whether you want to make some adjustments to that, and then you can vote on the grading criteria at that point.
I mean, that way, if somebody wanted to divide up the vote between, you know, splitting up high school and elementary or keeping them together, you could do that through an amendment vote.
Yes, you could, okay. And then as far as the activities and spectators, we, we're going to bring you two of those.
Yes. One is with no spectators and the other's with limited to family only.
That's what I have.
Okay, and then the third one is you're going to bring back two, how long we keep this in effect? One is nine weeks, the other is a semester.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Now that we've got all that done and we know where our direction is, and it was pretty good work, I think we got where we needed to be. I would like to propose on the 20th that we have, make sure that we have a blind vote on this and not by hand, so that we can, if everybody's not, you know, like tonight, Ben's not here for, for reasons, that we're going to, anything that we would have voted on, if we would have voted, we can't vote, but we would have voted by hand and everybody would have, and I'd like to have a blind vote, if that's possible, on the Thursday if we're not all here to, in the same area.
I think we are all going to be here on Thursday, and with that, we will have our remote clickers that we normally use, which is a blind vote.
Right.
So, I think we're covered for that. If not, I have already talked to Mike about having the, like we do when we elect board officers, where you put your, your yes or no on a piece of paper. So, I think, I think first of all, I think it's going to be taken care of, because we'll be able to use the remotes. If by chance somebody does have to miss, we've got that other as an option, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good suggestion.
I think we should all be here, because this is a vote that is going to determine if we can send our kids to school or not, and if we can be here, they can be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I see us pretty much having all the work we need to do. Dr. Thompson, there has been some discussion about COVID cases within the district, and I know you're planning to put that up on the website, but can you bring that data to us on Thursday as well, so that we can see it?
Yes.
Okay, and of course, bring back the information that we have, that we've asked you to bring tonight. So, do you have any other questions for us?
No, but what I would like to do is to just make a couple of announcements, if that's okay.
Sure. Sure.
Um, the document that you have before you here is all, that's what is on the website, on www.usd259.org/wpsreturn. And we just kind of ran this for you, so that you have an opportunity to see this. This is the district approach to returning back to school. This has been given to every single school within our school district, and they are taking this document and using it as a framework to be able to build, um, their individual plans in the building, with this being the framework. So that's the consistency that you will be able to find throughout the system, is that this is the document that is being used. Okay? Also, I'd like to take the opportunity... Invalid selection. I'd like to, um, say a couple of other things before we close. And for our viewers, I want to call your attention to that website again, so that you can make sure that everybody is clear on what the direction is, whether it's our staff, or whether it's our student, I mean, uh, whether it's our staff or our families, or anyone in our community, they have the opportunity to be able to do that. The report is about 20 pages long, and it brings together the breadth of information and considerations we've made regarding our planning work. And those of you who would rather watch it on video, you can see those workshops that we had before, and those are also very clear on what it is that the district level has asked, uh, our schools, uh, to adhere to. And we, you've heard these ele- elements individually, and we thought that we'd bring this to you, so that it's, you could see it all together in the document. So for so many of the district leaders that are sitting here in this lecture hall tonight, um, it's been our work for the last five months, and, uh, now that we've included that in a report that's easy for folks to read. Um, I wish that it was easy to answer all the questions that people continue to have out in the field, and I know our parents and our staff desperately want us to answer those questions, but every day, we get a step closer, and we are guided by the framework included in this particular document. And I would note that it is current as of today, because every day, you just seem to get more information and different information, and we have to decipher that and take it through legal, and take it through all these other places, to make sure that we have the best and the right information at the time. And it'll continue to evolve over time, and we just want to make sure that at, in, in the interest of transparency and keeping people well-informed, I want to make sure you're aware of the enhanced communication protocol that we now have in place, when an employee reports a positive case of COVID-19. We will continue to follow our COVID response plan. Again, that's also in the, in, on the website for anyone and everyone to see, and we will continue to notify, uh, the process, or modify that process, and make sure everyone who is deemed at close contact is made aware of that, and is given instructions on their 14-day quarantine. And what we have added to our communication strategy is that if any staff member in the building where there's a positive case is reported, they will be informed of that positive case. So that is part of our communication piece. And of course, we won't share any names or details, of course, but we know that some of our staff members aren't easy, and that they would rather be over-communicated with than under-communicated with. And we have been committed to over-communicating throughout the summer, and even when many of our staff members were off-contract. And now that we have our, uh, WPS family back to work, we will respect our employees, employee community by doing everything we can to share information in a transparent manner. And as I close, I just want to say that we have an amazing team of educational leaders, operational leaders, teachers, staff in the buildings, and support personnel who support the work in our buildings. And this journey will not be quick, nor will it be easy. And again, I want us to remember to be patient with one another, show grace, and, um, I can't think of a better group of people in, than to work in the Wichita Public Schools with such an amazing group of people, not just in this room, but in our buildings as well. So with that being said, um, I am going to, uh, yield back to the President of our Board.
Thank you very much. And I seconded, we don't, we couldn't have a better group of people than we have on your administrative team. They're doing phenomenal, phenomenal work. Ernestine, did you have a parting comment?
Well, I wanted to ask a question. How are the students getting their computing devices?
Okay. So, we, there is a plan that we do have. Um, again, as we stated for you in our last meeting, that, um, we would, we would need to bring that back to you at ano- another time, so that you could see, um, the plan, uh, because it changed, that changes daily as well. Because again, you have to wait for technology devices to get here, you have to wait, when then if you push it back, you know, when, you know, all of that is in play. So what we will do is, after you, we won't talk about it on the 20th, because, you know, you got other business to take care of, but you have another meeting on the 24th, and at that time, maybe we'll be able to have some information to share with you about how that's all going to lay out. But the team is working on it, and we will have a plan.
The other thing I wanted to say is, I, I'm pretty impressed with what this school district is doing, and apparently, it's impressive because a whole lot of other districts in the ca- in the state, in Kansas, are looking and waiting to find out what we do, because they know that we do it well. And I'm just very grateful to the staff that's been working their fingers off since March and since June, and all these teachers that came back for August, for all of that in-service training, and I want to thank all the teachers, all the staff members, all the custodians that are cleaning, all of the people that have done anything behind the scenes that aren't getting any kind of glory. Here's my glory for you. That's all.
Mike?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we covered this. Um, the one thing that we didn't talk about is if we're in remote, and Fabian was sitting up there, all hiding behind everybody, you know, are we going to continue to do lunches as we're doing them now, or are we going to have a different plan for lunch?
If you want to know now, or we can bring it back to you next week. It's, it's the pleasure, it's the pleasure of the, you all.
Next week is fine. I just, one of those, those issues that I wanted to make sure if we were going to do something, that we had to...
We have plans, pages, and booklets of plans.
I understand. If we're going to worry about cheerleaders, we need to worry about lunch, too.
Okay. Well, our next meeting will be Thursday at 6 o'clock here at North High School, and we will be completing this work and making some decisions and voting, so that we can move on with school. Do I have a motion to entertain adjournment?
I don't know whether we can vote.
Oh, that's right. I guess you're exactly right. We can't vote. I declare this meeting over. Thank you very much.
Make a adjournment.